It is now 7:30 and time to call the meeting of the City of Oak Harbor Planning Commission together, May 24, 2016. Let the record show that Commissioners Merriman and Pierce are absent. At this time, I'd like to have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 10, 2016.
I move that we approve the minutes from the last meeting?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda this evening is the public comment portion of our meeting, where we accept public comment for items not otherwise on the agenda for the first 15 minutes of the planning commission meeting. Seeing no one taking that, I'll close that portion of the meeting. The next item on the agenda is the 2017-2022 Capital Improvement Plan. This is going to be a public hearing, and Steve Powers will give us direction or comment prior to me opening that public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Planning Commission, as you've indicated, this is the 2017-2022 Capital Improvement Plan. We provided you a briefing at your May 10 meeting, only in the meeting format, though, so this evening is the public hearing on this item. As we've said to you for several months, it's tracking along with the comprehensive plan process, and when we get to the council, we'll fold them both into the same agenda item, but for the purposes of the Planning Commission, we've kept them separate just because of our timing. So, maybe we'll go to the PowerPoint here. There we go. So, this presentation will look very familiar to you. It's really based on the one that we put together for you last time. I won't go through each slide in detail. We gave you background on why we do a capital improvement plan, where the requirement comes from, how long we plan for, the fact that it's six years, it's always a sliding window forward is how we refer to it, that it's consistent with and implements our comprehensive plan, and that we implement it through our budget. We talked to you about where do the projects come from. That's a frequent question. How do we get the projects that are going into the capital improvement plan? Well, the short answer is it comes from those subject matter plans. So, street projects come from the transportation plan. Water projects come from the water system plan, et cetera. A little something different this year, we've incorporated some of the projects from the Windjammer Park Integration Plan, which we expect to have adopted in June. Projects from that were incorporated as part of our parks projects. This is a graphic representation of what we talked about last, well, a couple of weeks ago, that shows you that those subject matter plans inform or provide projects to the CIP. Gave you this graphic as well, that kind of gave you an idea of the timelines that we're dealing with. As you know, we use a 20-year horizon for the comprehensive plan, a six-year horizon for the CIP, and then our most detailed look at it is in the two-year budgeting process. So, these are the revised tables from the ones that we saw you last time, showed you last time. They're not any bigger this time on the screen than they were just a couple of weeks ago, but they have been cleaned up a little bit, and they are included in your packet. So, for the streets projects, I think the only thing that's really different here is that we've eliminated the red text in here and the strike-throughs. We also updated the cost of the Northeast 7th Avenue project. That project was still sort of in the conceptual planning stages when it came to the cost estimate. The last one we showed you was 3.6. This one shows you 4.7, but it accounts for the right-of-way that we believe will be necessary for that project to take place. So, that pushes the numbers in terms of the total expenditures. It also increased our total grants, because again, we're relying on the RTPO process for grants for that project. The only project that's on here that's sort of a continuation is the Whidby Avenue Crosswalk Project. That project is, you know, still something which is funded through the RTPO grant. We've not made much headway on that project, and so that's one where we've continued to show it on the list for you. We're showing it in 2017. Parks and Rec, as I indicated before, we've adjusted this based upon the planning effort that we've just gone through with the community on the Windjammer Park Integration Plan. So, it shows Phase 1 being done, or scheduled for 2018, and Phase 2 for 2020. The costs from there come from the cost estimates that we received as part of that planning process. We've kept the land acquisition portion of the project list for other parks, because as we know, with a growing community, we have needs for additional park space. That's a long-term process to identify the appropriate spots, go through the process to acquire funding, acquire the property, and begin the park development, and so that's reflected there. And then the funding sources, I think, are the same as what we showed you a couple of weeks ago. Wastewater is the same. I just cleaned up with this a little bit. We've got, obviously, we're building a clean water facility. That's the heavy hitter project for the next couple of years. Doesn't mean that's the only project that we're tackling, given within the context of the available staff resources. We have other sewer line projects that we'd like to tackle. Yes, sir?
Just to note that that title of the table is a little confusing, where it says Table 4.5, and right below it says Table 4.3.
Yes, great comment. Thank you for that. I just noticed that as soon as you started to say that. Water system projects, I went into that fairly detailed last time. The big ones on there are the ones for the bridge hangers and the relocation of the water line at the Sharps Corner Project, and so those are the largest cost projects that are on our immediate horizon. Stormwater, you know, we've been reflecting what we know is the scenic height stormwater outfall project that hopefully will be completed this year, so it no longer shows up in your six-year schedule. Right now, we do not intend, or we're not scheduling, any additional stormwater capital projects for the next six years. That doesn't mean we won't do maintenance projects, doesn't mean we won't take care of our facilities, but in terms of meeting our definition for capital project with just $50,000 or more, we don't see any of those on our six-year horizon. General government, we're still reflecting the things that we've shown before, which is the fire station and the animal shelter. And the Marina, while we have a couple of major repair projects down there, we don't see any of those continuing on into 2017 or beyond, so we have zero projects scheduled right now for Marina. So, review process, this is the part of the presentation that is new to you. We've already talked about that adoption of the CIP is essentially an amendment to the comprehensive plan. If that's the case, then we use our review criteria from the municipal code for comprehensive plan amendments. It's found in 1815-080. I've summarized those a little bit here for you. They're in detail in your staff report. In general, we're looking to see, is it promoting the health, safety, and welfare of the community? Is it consistent with comprehensive plan goals and policies? Is it consistent with GMA? Does it address changing circumstances in the community or new policy directions? And is it compatible with the community primarily from a neighborhood and a land use perspective? As you saw, staff's analysis in the staff report, we think the answer to each of those questions is yes. It is consistent with all of those things. It is promoting the public health, safety, and welfare. It's obviously consistent with our comprehensive plan, or from our perspective it is, because the projects in there are helping to implement the land use map, so there's that consistency right on down the road. So, we've concluded that it is consistent with all of the appropriate criteria. So, our recommendation to you then for this evening is to conduct a public hearing and recommend approval to the council. We've taken the liberty of suggesting a motion for you. If that fits your needs, you can just read it from your packet or read it from the screen, and I'd be happy to help you with any questions you might have.
I have one question. You said Northeast 7th was updated to 4.2?
4.7.
4.7?
Yes.
It's not on this copy that I have here, or I'm missing it?
It is in the one in...
It says 3.6.
It's the same as it was.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, I see 3.6.
I think we didn't get the new, I don't think we got the new...
Well, I apologize for that. It should be 4.7.
Okay.
And everything else is the same. It pushes, like I said, it increases the grant amount by a proportionate amount. Obviously, it's been a work in progress. We must not have gotten the right one into your packet at the right time.
Okay.
My apologies.
I had one other question. When this process began, and they had the public participation events where the citizens identified their criteria, the things that they would like to see in the capital improvement project, they were in this document, but they're now generalized under just general maintenance. The citizens, if they wanted to see, you know, is that still part of it? Because they did go through the exercises.
So, the more detail, and if we're talking about street projects, the detail of that is in the transportation plan itself, in which we've distilled the information from that, and that's what's providing this project list, and it's also the information that you saw in the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. That document will actually be coming forward to you and to the council within the next month or so, and so the detail on the detailed project list is really included in there. What we're showing here is what we think we can afford to do inside of the six-year window.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's a great question.
Thank you.
So, if we're looking at this Table 4.3, where it shows the projects, and then the total revenue less the capital, total capital expenditures, there's a balance here of about $964,000, but if we add in that million for 7th Avenue, does that become a negative number?
It does not, and again, please accept my apologies for the error here. We do have the correct one as part of the presentation. So, if we look over here on the screen, you can see the cost at 4.7.
Okay.
Okay? And then what's happened is, on the grants line, because it is our intention to utilize the RTPO grant process, this number here was increased, as was the other city funds. Those two numbers add up to the 4.7, so we end up with essentially the same, I don't want to call it excess revenue, but that total is the same.
Okay. Thank you.
Because the, while the project costs went up, the revenue costs went up proportionally.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, just for my notes then, in that grant line, instead of being 3.132, what is it?
It is four...
Because I can't read that far.
Yes.
Is that 4313? I'm sorry.
It is 4,089,000 is what we believe to be the grant portion, and the city fundage portion is 611,000.
Steve, is that a percentage that we have to pony up?
It's 87.5% is the grant, and the rest of it is the city match. Yeah.
Thank you.
Actually, I'm sorry, 86.5. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Uh-uh.
Well, we need to open the public hearing, so I will do that at this time. Public hearing's opened. Do I have any comment from the citizens? Seeing no one come to the podium, I will now close the public hearing, and we will do a discussion and/or entertain a motion.
I move the Planning Commission recommend approval of the draft 2017-2022 Capital Improvement Plan to City Council.
I second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
The next item this evening is the continuation of the public hearing, the 2016 Comprehensive Plan update, and CAC, Senior Planner, will lead us through this.
Thank you. Good evening. So, as mentioned, this is a continuation of the public hearing from the last meeting. I had a presentation at the last meeting talking about the three-year-long process that we followed to get here, so it's been a long, long process, and as Steve mentioned, I'd like to thank the Planning Commission for hanging in there and providing us all the feedback and comments and taking public testimony and everything related to the comprehensive plan. It's a document that's still kind of undergoing some minor changes, not much of content. As you know, we provided you with a more recent version of it yesterday, that has page numbers and so on. Couple of things I'd like to point out in terms of what is in this current document that wasn't there when you got the packet last week or at the last meeting. One is the Chapter 14 on Page 195. That's the Community Coordination Chapter, and that is basically a culmination of existing goals and policies that's directly related to the community support of N.A.S. Whidby. Since we changed or moved around a lot of information in the other elements, we needed to update that, and that's what we did. So, there's no real new information in there, other than the fact that it's reflecting already, not adopted, but already kind of finalized goals in the other chapter. So, that's one that's been added. Also want to point out, you know, one of the things that we were doing is contacting other agencies for information related to their plans and so on, and the school district's information was a little delayed, and we got that information, and that's on Page 183, and they provided a pretty good write-up on some of the challenges that they're going to face over the next 20 years trying to accommodate the population, and so that has been added to your latest version as well. As you can see, it's still got some minor things that we're continuing to work as we speak. Our associate planner, Ray Lindenberg, is doing a lot of work on that. You know, minor things like, you know, giving tables their numbers and figures their numbers, those are the things that were still continuing to work before the final adoption to City Council. But from content and policy-related, nothing's been changed. That remains the same. One more exhibit that was included in your packet that didn't get the latest version similar to the Capital Improvements Plan is the Development Regulation Sheet that talks about the establishment of districts, and I have the most up-to-date. What your copy is missing is the maritime land use designation and its related zoning. Somehow, that got missed in the, when I was creating this. We have the updated version of it on our... So, not a substantial change, it's just something that was omitted. The maritime is its own land use, and so it will have its own zoning. It's a very distinct zoning category that applies to the lands around Marina, so just wanted to include that into the text amendment. So, that'll move forward to the Planning Commission as I've presented it to you. So, thank you again for all the time, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, comments, or anything that you have. So, I'm here to, I would recommend that the Planning Commission open the public hearing or continue the public hearing, take public testimony if there is, and we recommend closing the hearing, and if the Planning Commission is comfortable making a recommendation to the City Council, we highly recommend that.
Well, it is a continuation of the public hearing. I see no one in the audience that would want to address this matter at this time. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Once again, Commissioners, do you have any...
Can I ask some questions?
Yes.
So, I came into the process very late. You guys have already gone through about 90% of it, I guess. So, bear with me while I ask some stupid questions.
Ah, okay.
So, there's still liable to be some changes, because, for example, some of this is contingent upon what the county does with their comprehensive plan.
Most of what the county is delaying does not impact us. Most of the information that they will use that impacts us, we have already shared. So, for example, one of the main things is population. So, we did that a couple of years ago. We established the projections, and we went forward with that. We did the buildable lands analysis, and we did the county-wide planning policies, which establish consistency between all the documents and all the information that they use. In terms of UGA expansion, we know that there's capacities, although no lines are moving in that area. So, most of the information that we need to share with the county, we have already done that, and we have updated our comprehensive plan. I am not entirely sure what they have remaining that will impact us in terms of our update. If they do have anything, then it will have to be done through the annual amendment process for the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Thank you. And then, getting back to the transportation plan, I understand when we just talked about the capital improvement plan, that that's a six-year plan, but this is a 20-year plan, but there's still only two items in here as far as the transportation improvements over that 20 years?
Well, we probably, you know, we have the eight-year major update for the comprehensive plan cycle, so even though we plan for 20 years in terms of population projection, our comprehensive plan will get updated every seven years or eight years. And so, currently, it kind of matches, from a project standpoint, the six- and seven-year capital improvements plan. When we revisit the update eight years from now, we probably will have a new transportation plan, another update to it, and more projects listed in that, and so that'll come into this plan.
Well, I guess my question is, the transportation plan, which is being developed right now, is a 20-year plan also?
Yeah. It plans for 20 years, but it'll get updated every seven or eight years.
Yeah, so if they're currently doing a 20-year plan, I would think that whatever comes out of that would go in here.
Yes. Well, the transportation plan is a standalone document, and it can stand by itself. What we're doing is taking just the policy aspect of it and putting it into the comprehensive plan and calling it the element, and along with that, we're just taking the six-year kind of project list and putting it here, which again, gets updated every seven, eight years, so...
Okay. Thank you.
I'll go back to the same item we just discussed regarding the transportation plan, and it's my understanding is, there's a number of projects that are out there that are not identified, but because it's a two-year cycle, depending on the revenues that are generated, okay, those can move up, okay? Even not necessarily in the sequence they were called out initially, but if something more critical happens and needs more attention, those will be moved based on the two-year budget cycle as well.
Yes. So, let's say if a project gets moved in year three or four into the capital improvements plan for funding, or the Northeast 7th Avenue gets switched out somewhere in the three or four year, we'll be doing plan amendments to reflect that.
Right.
We'll do a capital improvements plan almost every year, so it'll be in front of us, hopefully, as we know that the changes are occurring, so it'll happen to the capital improvements plan, and if Northeast 7th is some, is a project that gets dropped for whatever reason, and some other project comes in, we'll be doing an amendment to the transportation plan or the transportation element here to reflect that change. So, all that change will kind of come through a public process for discussion.
Yeah, the Seven Street construction project was actually approved several years ago, but we were not able to, we didn't have the matching monies to support that, so therefore, we had to give the grant money back.
That's correct.
So, that's why it remained on the top of the list of necessary projects that need to be taken care of, and that's why it's the top of the list on this one.
Yes, it's an important project, much-needed project. It meets a lot of criteria for the grants, just because of its substandard nature and the way it's being used, so we feel confident that when we come through, go through the grant cycles again, that it'll hopefully come up to the top because of all the criteria that meets the safety and all of those standards.
Last comment I'll have, if you don't mind. Again, back to the public participation, I just want the public to know that all those projects that they spent time addressing, you know, we spent time evaluating as well, and they're all important projects, and each one of those projects has different things that need to occur, whether it be engineering, you know, it could affect stormwater, wastewater, all of those things, and so there's a lot of different elements that go into it, and it's not as simple as just, okay, putting a stripe on a street and having a bike lane or putting a sidewalk in. Things happen underneath the ground that we have to consider as part of these projects that do get funded, and so there's a lot of thought that goes into that, you know, to move it forward. So, I just want the public to realize that it's, there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes that we don't always get involved in, and they might not be aware of, but it is part of the project.
Yeah, absolutely.
I just have a compliment. I really like the formatting of the comp plan. It's really easy to read. It's easy to dive in there and look at specific areas. It just looks really nice. It's a big document, so good job.
Yeah, we have Ray Lindenberg to thank for. He's pretty creative in that.
Yeah, who would have guessed, three years ago, when we started out on this venture and all the little bits and pieces, it was all disjointed. We had absolutely, probably, no clue what it would look like in the end, but marvelous job. Well done.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments or concerns, questions?
I'm going to make a motion.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to move that the Planning Commission forward the 2016 Comprehensive Plan Major Update to City Council with a recommendation for adoption.
Have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 You appear to be as happy as we are.
At this time, the final item on the agenda this evening is the, Steve Powers makes the presentation about the Windjammer Park Integration Plan. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Lawson. This is a continuation of our briefing to you on this unique planning effort that we've been engaged on or with for some time. As you know, two of your fellow commissioners are, have been part of our community advisory group, and we appreciate their participation both there and here. And what I'm going to do this evening for you is quickly talk a little bit about the feedback that we got at the March open house, and we've talked a little bit about that before, and then really spend the time focusing on what came out of the last CAG meeting, the fifth Community Advisory Group meeting, which was at the beginning of this month, and then where are we going from here? So, this graphic should look pretty familiar to you. We are in the home stretch. We're right down in here. We've had the CAG meeting number five, and we're getting ready to go to the council here, in fact, tomorrow, for a briefing at their workshop, and we are still targeting June 7th as the date that we go to the council to seek their potential approval of the plan. So, what did we get in terms of our feedback during that last public participation process? I think you've seen this slide. We had some good participation at the, at the open house with real people, and then we had a number of participants through the online open house as well, and got some in-person surveys turned in and some online surveys turned in. What did we learn through all of that? I think we talked about this before. Family-friendly things are important. Lot of stuff going on in the plan. Make sure we're getting the right balance. Let's not impact the waterside condos too greatly. Kind of some mixed feelings about the waterfront trail, and we have some graphics that will show you how that could look. General agreement that we can relocate the... General agreement that we can relocate the RV park and the ball fields. Ball fields particularly important to note only if another place is identified and they are constructed before we would remove them from the park facility. And probably the most obvious statement that any of us will ever make is that the waterfront is a resource and an asset to our community. So, this was the plan that was shared with the public at that, at that March meeting. This is the plan that is the result of the feedback that we got. You say, well, they're remarkably alike, but they are, but there are differences. And I will go through some enlargements, some blowups, that will show you some of those differences. There we go. So, talk a little bit about family-friendly. This is just highlighting what we've been doing. This is down in the southwest corner of the site, so this is where Beeksma Drive comes in to entrance the park. Really just some blowups that show how those potential active areas could be organized near the parking so that it's easy for families with children to get into and out of those particular locations. More in the center part of the park, here's the lagoon, the reshaped lagoon, showing the location of the Splash Park, which is a key component to just about everybody's thoughts on terms of redesigning the park. And then, pardon me, on the east side of the park, a much enlarged playground area over the area that we have right now, south of the ball fields. And so, really what this slide is just, is just acknowledging that we've gotten that feedback that encourages the family-friendly activities, and we're showing where those things in general are taking place, certainly not the only places. Sandy?
Could you please tell me what are you depicting in those little pictures on the far left as you come out of parking? What is all of that?
Oh, so, so, those are basketball courts. These would be organized play areas of some sort, maybe bocce ball. We have picnic facilities in there, areas that you could reserve or rent, just like you do right now for the kitchens.
Okay.
Okay? And so, that, and what we don't wanna do is we don't wanna dive down too far as to what is this thing versus that thing?
Right.
Because as we've been talking about, these, this is at the forty thousand foot level.
Certainly.
And then, as we move into this area, there will be additional public engagement in deciding what are the actual features going in those locations. But those are representative things.
Thank you. I just couldn't tell what they were representing.
Yeah. So, one of the areas which was a little, we had mixed, we had mixed comments on, the waterfront trail. Some people like the idea of a serpentine trail with some potential topography. Others like the idea of just the plain, straight trail running immediately parallel to the shoreline. And there was concern that the trail, or the dunes, rather, or the topography was going to block the view to the water. So, a couple of sketches here that show really more about what's intended. So, as we see, this would be the hard surface trail like this, but then these would be maybe a different surface, a more of a soft surface trail that could take you right up to the water. So, different trails for different types of individuals, different mobility levels. Here is more of a drawing that gives you a sense of what that really looks like or could potentially look like, with the idea that there is some topography or some terrain, but it's not so high as to block your view of the water. So, here we, here we would have the hard surface trail. Here we have some other surf, other type of surface that could take you to some shelters of some sort, again, giving you different experiences as the user of the park.
So, would that be wood planks perhaps, or would the soft surfaces?
It could be, it could be more of a, of a soft surface mulch trail. When we looked at what the, what our landscape architects were calling precedent imagery, we saw a lot of different things. It could be concrete panels with, with grasses in between or sand in between. There's a whole wide variety of things. But the idea being is that this would, this would definitely be a continuous hard surface trail, just like the one we have today, in the sense that, that you have that mobility. And then, this would, could be a different surface to give you a different experience. So, what are some of the things which have changed based upon the public input? Wetlands. We had some questions or concerns that we were showing too much enhanced wetland along the northern boundary of the property. Partly, I think, because when we look at what we have out there today, it doesn't scream wetland to you. It reads as a drainage ditch. But as we've talked about a number of times, it is in fact a regulatory wetland. So, whether we view it as a wetland or review it as a ditch, we have to follow those rules and make sure that we respond accordingly. Our previous concepts probably showed that enhancement larger than what it certainly needed to be, and maybe larger than what our community was comfortable with. So, what these are intended to show you is that that area has been scaled back, again, at a conceptual level. Will meet our requirements for our environmental permitting, but we've scaled back on the area of the vegetation, and we've scaled back on the area that potentially is enhanced wetland in recognition of some of the community concerns. Again, please keep in mind that what we've got are concept drawings here, and obviously not detailed construction drawings. I'm not doing this very well. This is one of the areas which I think is easier for you to see the change in. Lots of comments that perhaps we had too many trees in the existing, or the previous concept. We had a heartfelt confession from our landscape architect, which is when they start drawing trees, they really like doing that, and maybe they got a little carried away. And so, what they've done here, this was the previous concept, this is along the northern boundary of the park. This is, these are the car dealerships to the north. That ditch that we were talking about, I was talking about, sort of runs right in this area. So, what they've done to show you is, is that they've significantly opened up areas of the park that previously were shown as being in some sort of vegetation or in a tree canopy.
Would there, would there be any reclamation of those wetlands?
Well...
In other words, would they, to shrink it up, they have to do other things to mitigate that?
Well, because it's such a narrow wetland right now, we can probably get away from a, from a permitting perspective, we'll be able to do a fairly narrow enhancement area along there.
Okay.
It'll be a little different at the, at the east end of it, where it gets closer to the clean water facility itself. That's probably gonna bow out a little bit in order for us to meet our permitting requirements in that location. But in this area, it will probably be relatively narrow in terms of what that wetland buffer requirement will be. So, the big takeaway here is that there was concern from the community that we would have too many trees that were taking up valuable park space, and there are also some public safety concerns expressed by folks that maybe the understory would provide places for activities that we'd rather not encourage in the park. And so, again, conceptually, what we're showing you is an opening up of some of those park vistas.
Okay.
Uh, we had explored the idea of having an additional or relocated vehicular access into the park rather than coming down City Beach as a way to get to parking lot, create a new driveway here along the east edge of the park near the waterside condos. A lot of feedback that that was not maybe the best idea. And so, the revised concept has eliminated, has eliminated that drive entrance, has eliminated the parking here. What we've done is, is work to figure out how to create better parking, more or less in the City Beach Street alignment right now, take better advantage of that space than what is out there today. We continue to show parking along Bay Shore. Other comments we received in here, again, sort of back to the vegetation, was that this was too heavily treed, and that while our waterside condo folks enjoy somewhat of a buffer between the park and them, they still like the idea of being able to view into the park. And so, graphically, we're trying to represent that difference. Not a lot of change in here as far, I think this is just a blowup to remind us of the types of things that we potentially are doing in here with the reallocated parking area, relocating the windmill to have it provide a visual cue as you come down Beeksma Drive. These two vignettes here are intended to show you that within that larger space, you could, you could use that in a variety of means. You could line it out for ball fields if that's what you needed. And we're still showing that you could potentially locate some sort of community room facility in this immediate area, consistent with some of those earlier concepts that we looked at. That's obviously not a proposal. It's not a hard and fast part of this. It's merely intended to show you that, and show the community, that should that be something that the community wants to move forward with, there's a spot that could, could work here, and it would be adjacent to parking.
It looks like we've gained more parking stalls. Do we?
I don't think there's been a change in the, in the size of the parking. Probably that by reducing the tree cover, you can just see more of them.
Ah, okay.
Yeah. This is a blowup in that, in that other corner that where you had the question, Sandy, about what are the types of things that could be taking place down there?
Correct.
Some precedent imagery. We've, we've seen these things before. I'm gonna go through these next slides relatively quickly. Here's the area near the lagoon. It, it actually is smaller footprint than it is today. We have a reorganized edge, as you can see, hard surface edge. We've got some ideas as to what that could look like, and then a more natural edge. And this is pretty much the same as what you've seen in previous versions. Some, some more detail about how the area to the south of the clean water facility could look. You know, the Splash Park is a thing that everybody is talking about right now. It's envisioned being at the end of that promenade that comes down from Pioneer Way. Nice visual cue here. A water feature which originates at the clean water facility would flow down to the clean, to the Splash Park itself. And again, these are some images of, of similar types of things in other parks, not intended to show you an actual picture of what we're gonna build. What, what the area of the ball fields could look like, when and if we get to the point of relocating them and reclaiming that as, as park area as opposed to dedicated baseball. It's a good point right now for, for quick questions, although you've been asking them all along.
Um, the, the two concerns that I have, at the last meeting that we had of the CAG, it was stated that the parking to the south of the sewer plant was gonna be for the employees there. And I don't know if that was just a misspeaking?
I think it is. There is employee parking on the inside of the compound, for lack of a better phrase. There are parking spaces in, inside of there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, because that, that's the closest parking, and that's gonna be handicap parking or something.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be parking, that would be for the community, visitors to the, to the center, not for staff parking. Yeah.
And then, my other biggest concern is that the, at the very first meetings of the plan for the sewer plant, it was talked about that one of the going-in propositions was the sightline down City Beach Street to Mount Rainier would be kept open. And the diagrams don't really indicate that that's still gonna happen.
Okay. We'll make note of that, 'cause I, you know, I don't think there's anything that's intended to be at the end of that that's a vista blocker, but we'll make sure that that comment is carried forward as, as we look, as we get to those phases of the plan.
Thank you.
Good comment. Thank you. That actually takes me into the next phase, which I won't spend a lot of time on in the next portion of the presentation. Cost was obviously a question that folks had, what do these types of things cost? So, our consultants pulled for us costs from various other urban parks that they have been involved with, either designing or in construction or both. And there's a range of, as you might expect, depending upon the circumstances. So, we looked at, you know, different-sized parks, what's the cost per acre, just merely as a benchmark. Obviously, each is gonna be different. Each situation is different. So, here you're at one place in Portland, it's $450 per acre. Another place in Oregon, it's a little over a million an acre. Obviously, that's a pretty, pretty wide range. We're back to $450 an acre, a million an acre, again, depending upon the features and the, and the particular challenges of that particular site. As low as $140 an acre for, for a much simpler park in Beaverton, and about $350 for a park in, in Wilsonville. You can see, here's a very urban park, obviously, given the context, and a very urban price, right?
Yeah. Yeah, boy.
So, rough, rough level estimates at this point, what they call planning level estimates, with the things that we're, we're showing conceptually somewhere in the range of $630 an acre, which is, which is to the low end of the, of that range that, that you've just seen. So, the, the big question then for folks is, was phasing, and let me just start by saying this is actually fairly complicated, but it's also very simple. The complicated portion of it is, is knowing exactly which piece of, on the ground is being disturbed as part of the construction project, and how will that repair and replacement take place and at what point? That's a little more challenging than what we're showing here. This is the phasing that's envisioned or suggested for implementing this particular plan. So, you can see that there's been quite a bit of thought gone into this. Phase one, phase one B, two, three, four, and five is, is the last piece over here. So, in sequence, a little bit easier to see. We've gone through and we've listed the things that we think will take place in one, and this one actually shows one and one B, and then we show one again. So, the reason that, that this is one is that, whoops, that was too fast, is that from about this line north, and then over to here are the areas that we are presently disturbing, right? So, that's the area where we have construction. That's where we have the lay-down yard for all the equipment and the supplies. That's where we have the giant mound of dirt. So, obviously, we have an obligation to fix all of that area as part of the clean water facility. We're calling that phase one, but essentially, it's the, it's the last piece of the construction of the facility. That also includes creating the new parking area, parking lot, which is underneath where the Woodbillon Bank building, the former Woodbillon Bank building sits right now. So, phase one B, then, is that area immediately south of that line down to the waterfront. And most importantly, we think, includes the Splash Park. As you saw from your earlier agenda item, we've included that in the 2018 capital improvement plan. So, our, our goal, our intention at this point from a staff perspective, is for this to follow essentially almost simultaneously with phase one, because as you know, we're trying to bring the, the plant online in, in mid-2018. So, we're trying to figure out how to make this happen at the same time that all of the rest of this happens. Phase two, whoops, darn it, now I'm going crazy. Phase two gives us the, the grand entrance to the park, gives us the improvements along Beeksma Drive, gives us the southern half of that parking area that wasn't part of phase one. Three gives us that, that, that middle area, that open grassy area that can be used for a variety of events, plus the improvements down in this lower corner. It's really sensitive. Five is over here. I'm not sure what happened to four.
[laughing].
Yeah, four is missing. I apologize for that. It's the one I didn't show you. The other thing that we, we shared with the CAG is some discussion about funding. You know, what are the potential funding sources? How do we go about funding this? Obviously, it's not all coming from the sewer fund. That's inappropriate. It's, it's, you know, a portion of it is, because it's the sewer fund project, but obviously, the majority of it is not going to be from the sewer fund. As you all know, general fund is, is highly sought after, the most desirable of the funds, 'cause they can be spent in, in a variety of ways, but they're also the ones which are most limited. And so, we look at a variety of funding sources. Each phase will likely have a different combination of funding sources. We will take full advantage of all grant opportunities that, that we can find that are available to us, mixing and matching as we need to put together the pieces of the projects as we go through. It's also possible, of course, that different pieces inside of phase three will take place at slightly different times with different funding sources for each of those pieces. A different way to think about funding, city funding, collaborating with other groups, where are other possible sources of funds and, and other funding ideas. These are just things that, that we were sharing with the community advisory group to show that there is more than one way to get to the final product in terms of paying for things. Next steps, as I said, tomorrow, we brief the council. Pretty much the same thing boiled down a little bit differently at their workshop, and then on to the June seventh meeting with the final document itself. There is actually a plan that'll be coming out to the CAG members when we, when we get ready to release it to the council that encapsulates this entire process. So, there is actually a master plan document.
Which one of those phases, Steve, does the, are we gonna do new public restrooms, that type of thing?
Each of them have some, but one of the thoughts right now is, it, it may be beneficial for us to do the public restrooms all at one time, if we can. We've had some interest at the council level in something known as a Portland Lou, which is a, a, a different type... is a, a different type of public restroom. They accommodate one person, they have enough privacy so that you can use the restroom, but not so much privacy that you can have more than one person in there. It's not a place where you're gonna wanna sleep, it's not a place where you're gonna wanna spend the night, that kind of thing. They are self-contained, they are practically indestructible, and they, in a sense, they come basically fully assembled, and you, you plug it on to your sewer connection and your water connection. Think the old Photoshop, Photo Stop, places used to be in the parking lots, it's kinda like that, except it's a restroom.
And secondly, has thought been given to maintaining, once we get this project?
Absolutely. A lot of conversation about maintenance, a lot of concern from the community to make sure that, that what we build, we can continue to keep as nice as it was the day that, that we opened it. And so, as we go through each successive phase, there will be fine tuning to the, to the concepts and the designs until we get to the construction phase, and that will be with an eye towards how will we take care of it?
Thank you.
That's it from the staff on this one.
So the $630,000 per acre?
Mm-hmm.
Does that include archaeology? And the trees and, is, how inclusive is that, 630,000?
It's very inclusive. It's, it's what we know as, again, as a planning level estimate.
Okay.
So, so those are pretty big, they're generous numbers.
Okay.
It also includes a 30% contingency.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
And so, as we move forward with each phase, we would expect that number obviously to be refined as well.
Okay.
So, but that's really just to give you a benchmark, right? 'Cause people wanted to know, well, how much is it gonna cost? Can we afford to do this? Is it gonna be another cool design that we come up with that's just gonna sit around for a long time? And we wanna demonstrate that it's, it's not out of whack with what's happening in the rest of the world?
Right.
And that it's a very attainable number.
Okay. And then last, two weeks ago, I asked about the $750,000 bathroom?
Mm-hmm.
If we do the Portland Lou, are those off the table?
The, Portland Lues are relatively expensive, but when we factor in that they come pre-designed, so we don't have the design cost, when we factor in that we don't, that they're really hard to damage, we won't have the replacement costs, and we'll save money on other types of costs associated with the use of the restroom. So, it won't be that big number, but it'll still be a relatively large number, depending on how many we might purchase.
Correct. But we would replace the, that original idea with the Portland Lou?
If that's the direction the council wants to go.
If that's what they wanna do.
Yeah.
So it would be either or, not both.
Or maybe, or it could be a combination. I mean, if, if we decide that there's a restroom building which still serves the need of the park, then you would do that.
Right.
But there are some benefits to this Portland Lou idea.
Yeah.
In fact, Councilman Servati has specifically asked for staff, for council briefing on that, and we're preparing that briefing right now. I think within the next month, we'll be getting back to them. So we see that dovetailing with this conversation?
Right.
And then potentially even advancing the time in which we would install those, if that's what the council chooses.
And so does that, because I'm not familiar with the Portland Lou, does, does that mean we have the ability to put a few here and a few here and make it maybe easier access for people? Is that?
Yeah, that's, that's the idea.
That would be part of the idea?
It's, we think it's an economical, although not cheap, way to, to serve that need of the community.
Cool.
So you might put some, there's, you know, one near Pioneer Way, right? We don't have one on Pioneer Way near the park. That was something that was discussed during this process. Put it at appropriate location along the trail. Somewhere near the Clean Water Facility itself because of the, of the events and those things that would be taking place. So strategically placing them within the park.
Cool. Thank you.
Is Bay Shore Drive completely off the plan?
It is as far as we're concerned.
Is it completely what? Off the plan?
Yeah, it is not part of the transportation plan, and so it is not part of our Windjammer Park design. It is not part of the design.
So the, the park will actually go up to the city's property line there at the drain, it's along the fence, it's private property?
Just like it does today. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Well, with that, I guess we will call the meeting adjourned.